Your question doesn't get asked. It is 6:30. Thank you, everybody, for coming. My name is Barb Hedrick. I am currently the co-president or the vice president of the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley, who are holding this event for you all tonight. I'm also the president of the League of Women Voters of North Dakota. It's my job here to do as best I can to keep things organized and moving along and asking the questions. This is the candidate forum for the West Fargo School Board. Thank all the candidates who are able to join us tonight. And we will be running in our usual format of opening statement, in this case, for two minutes, followed by questions, one minute, every person will get to answer every question, and then we will stop close to the end of the time, and everyone will have a one-minute closing statement. Now, League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. If you'd like to learn more about us, please visit our website or Facebook page. If you'd like to learn more about these candidates, we encourage you not only to watch this whole thing as it's broadcast on the West Fargo local cable access channel and being rebroadcast until the election, as well as a recording that will be replayed through our website and Facebook page, but also to go to our 2022 voter guide, known as vote411.org. At vote411.org, you'll be able to put in your information about where you live, and you can get polling information, ballot information, and, as many as the candidates know, questions answered by those candidates about their reasons for running for office and other things as well. So, all right. So we will start with opening statements, and we will start with John Erickson.
Thank you, and certainly like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on.
Mike right there, yeah.
Not quite right lined up.
There you go.
There we go. All right. So certainly like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I know I've been doing it for a couple of years, so it's always run very well. This is my, I've had two terms, and I'm going for my third term, so I've been on the board for eight years. And I think as we continue to go through, kind of really kind of come out of the COVID years and really get into some of the different processes and move forward on what we can, looking at the new strategic plan and really kind of focusing on wellness of the learner, so essentially the teachers and the students, and essentially each individual community that's in each of the schools, and really kind of keeping the consistency would be able to, is really where I, you know, what is driving me to kind of run again, and be able to kind of keep those consistent and really, I was part of developing the new strategic plan and really liked, really believe in it, really like to be able to go pursue it and really help the administration move forward with that strategic plan, and first and foremost, of course, the wellness of all the learners and that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Cole Davidson.
I'll have to echo what John said, and thank you for holding this event. It's a great event, not only for voters but for candidates to get their message out and inform the voters, so thank you very much. My name is Cole Oris Davidson, Oris after my grandfather. I was born and raised on a ranch in western North Dakota, a little town called Stanley. I was involved in sports growing up, student council, went to college at North Dakota State, where I earned a bachelor's degree in theater arts and a master's degree in business administration. Since then, I've worked, I worked eight years at North Dakota State in higher education, and I now currently work in the private sector in sales for a Fortune 100 company. The reason I'm running for school board is, first and foremost, my calling, my vocation in life, is to be the best father and husband that I can be. I've got three kids in the West Fargo School District, and they're the biggest reason I'm running. When I look out at what's happening today in the nation, at schools and in school boards, I'm a little bit concerned with some of the things that I'm seeing, even here locally in West Fargo. And everything from virtual learning and how that has impeded student growth and learning to where I see controversial social and political ideologies being promoted in schools. Teacher retention is a huge issue. North Dakota United put out the results of a survey recently, and I'm concerned that in years to come, we might not have enough teachers to teach our students. So these are some of the issues that I'd like to address, I'd like to be part of the discussion, the dialogue that solves those problems, not only for my children, but for children who move through the system in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Jackson.
Hi, I'm Jessica Jackson. Once again, thank you for holding this event. I'm seeking a second term on the board. Wanted to introduce myself to start out. Again, Jessica, I'm born and raised in West Fargo. I'm a 1997 graduate, went through the district from kindergarten to graduation. Both of, we're blended families, we have four teenagers and a two-year-old, and they attend West Fargo High School. So I'm not only a mom, but I'm a stakeholder as well. You know, I got my start really interested in school boards and leadership, if you will, being involved in our local PTO. So I was a member, a treasurer, I was president and that. And then, once my kids went to middle school, I decided, you know, I wasn't quite ready to be done, because I was just that passionate. And so I chose to run for school board at that time, and again, this, I'm seeking my second term. The bachelor's in child and family studies from Concordia, my master's is in human development and family science. My career took me into the retirement and financial planning sector, so I work as a retirement advisor here in Fargo. And, you know, overall, I've had several people ask me, you know, what we went through this last year, you know, why are you running again? Why would you do that? Because it's a lot of work. But again, I'm very passionate about it, and I'd like to continue serving on the various committees, too, that I've been on, with governance, strategic task force, and so on. So, once again, Jessica Jackson, and thank you for holding this event.
Thank you. Mark Staples.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Staples. I'd like to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum and for all you do to inform voters in our community, and also thanks to the city of West Fargo for hosting us here. As a 2013 graduate of West Fargo High School, I, and a lifelong member of this community, I care deeply about the success of our schools and the students that occupy our classrooms and hallways. That's why I sought out a vacant seat on the school board and was appointed by my fellow board members last August. I believe that good governance requires good communication, and I bring professional experience engaging with stakeholders on public policy. In my career, I've worked in communications for the North Dakota Governor's Office, and I now advocate for bipartisan policy solutions with the Nature Conservancy. In my time on the board this past year, I've engaged with families, educators, and students through various task forces and developed a new advisory board with students to improve communication between the board, administrative leadership, and the most clear stakeholders in our system, the students. It's been a fantastic way for us to get involved with learners and really elevate their voices. My priorities on the school board include recovering from the loss of learning that we've experienced throughout the pandemic over the past two years, providing an equitable opportunity for all students to succeed in our district, and responsibly managing the growth that we've seen over the past decade and beyond, and will likely keep seeing into the future. My firsthand experience as a student in our schools who experienced that growth provides a unique perspective on the board and brings a renewed focus to student success. With your support, I hope to be elected to a full term on the board and continue working for the students, families, educators, and taxpayers in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Jones.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Jones. I also want to extend gratitude to the League of Women Voters for organizing this important event, and to everyone attending for taking time to learn about the West Fargo School Board and for actively engaging in our community. I especially appreciate the league for making this event more accessible by streaming it online. As a working parent, I relate with the difficulty of either arranging and paying for childcare or having to herd kids to make it to an event on time. Similarly, I have encountered many barriers for parents to attend and engage in West Fargo School Board meetings. While efficiency is important, the current system makes it very difficult for parents to know much of what the school board is doing, and especially opaque, to understand why board members did or did not take action. I am running to improve the function of the school board, to make it more accessible and equitable for all families, to ensure that the voices and needs of our excellent teachers are heard and included in decisions, and to prioritize the behavioral health of all students and staff in decision-making regarding supporting school environments and services provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Jonas.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for having us this evening. I'm Jonas, Jim Jonas, a longtime teacher and coach in the district, 30 years, and I go looking for my second term on the board. I currently am the president of the school board, and I served for two years as a vice president, and I have a deep commitment to the students and the teachers and the citizens of West Fargo. My commitment is proven to my visibility. Every Friday, I go to an elementary school to visit our teachers and our students, middle schools, so I'm out there in the community. You might have seen me at a ballgame, a theater play, and it's really important to be visible in the community, I think, so. And everything I've done in my professional career has been for education, to benefit students and teachers. And after my career as a teacher, now on the board, I'm honored to work with such a wonderful board, and our goal, once again, is always to put children first, our students first, whether it be building a new school, iPads, but the most important thing we put in those schools are our teachers. They're our greatest resource. So I'm deeply involved in the community. I'm part of the West Fargo Educational Foundation. We're starting a $2.5 million campaign to give money back to our teachers and our students. I'm also on the Board of Directors of the West Fargo Exchange Club, where we give money back to the schools, our elementary's, schools, and I'm also on the Board of West Fargo Events. I'm also running uncontested for the legislature in District 13, and I've been working behind the scenes to get on the educational committee, which would be a big benefit for our district. So my love of West Fargo, the schools, the community, the city, the parks, and I'm seeking another term to be on the board with the board members, and I'm fortunate to work with such great board members. And Jessica and Cole, if you come on board, it's a great organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to let our audience know, we do have one candidate name you see here for a candidate who was not able to join us tonight, Scott Daniel Casper. Please contact him yourself to ask him any questions you hear tonight, maybe get his responses as well. We will start our first question with Cole Davidson. He'll have one minute to respond. I'll do my best to make it as clear as I can with the questions I get. We get these online, we get them from audience members here as well. "Shortage of teachers is a national concern, one that also affects West Fargo. How would you propose the district retain current teachers and recruit new qualified educators, and do you think there is a need to recruit more teachers of more diverse backgrounds?"
Well, I've had many conversations with current and past teachers in the West Fargo school system, and I think this is one issue that everybody's aware of. Teachers feel burnt out. Of course, they need competitive pay, but that's not the number-one issue. They're overworked, they're being pulled both ways, politically, socially, and student disciplinary policies, from my conversations, are too soft. So one thing that I would do, I strongly believe that student disciplinary policies and teacher retention are directly related, so I would look at those policies as they relate to student discipline, so teachers can feel safe in their learning environment. In terms of recruiting teachers, I would trumpet what we've done with disciplinary policies, make sure that teacher pay is competitive. And in terms of diversity, I think that's a, I think we need to define diversity before we talk about who we're going to recruit. I think we want the most qualified teachers first, and that's the priority. Are the teachers qualified to instruct the curriculum as it relates to reading, writing, math, physical sciences, and the arts? And that should be the number-one priority in recruitment.
Thank you. Jessica Jackson.
So your question first regarding how to recruit teachers. So our district is currently utilizing a variety of methods with our current teacher recruiting practices, which I absolutely fully support, and fully support as well hiring the best qualified. If there's one thing, too, that we learned from COVID, it's we need our teachers. We need our kids in the building, and we need our teachers, and we love them and we value them. You know, as far as, you know, as far as pay, of course, we have been looking at that very closely, too. Teacher pay and benefits, very, very much important. So overall, I definitely address the current shortage of teachers that is currently going on in the nation, and I'm very proud, too, that our district has addressed that, is looking at that. And then, your question here regarding, too, you know, teachers of diversity, and I'll stop.
Okay. Mark Staples.
Staffing shortages are felt at every level, teachers, paraprofessionals, behavioral specialists, building operations, administrative staff, and on down the line. As a board member, I've supported the district's efforts to comprehensively study wages, and I voted to raise pay for staff members whose salaries weren't keeping up with the market. But we know that investments must go beyond making salaries competitive. We need to continue making associated investments across the district that affect teacher well-being. This includes investing in our facilities to ensure we have manageable class sizes and equitable resources in every building. And we must also continue investing in staff positions that can spread out the workload on our teachers, especially as we recover, we recover from the loss of learning caused by the pandemic. When it comes to recruiting diverse teachers, students perform better when they can see themselves in education and when they feel comfortable in their school. And that's not just a belief, it's backed by data. A study of students in North Carolina and Tennessee showed that for disadvantaged black male students, having a black teacher for just one year in their elementary school reduced ROPA rates by 39%. It makes a difference, and we have to support that.
Thank you. Jessica Jones.
I come from a family of educators, and I spent much of my childhood in my mom's second-grade classroom. Today, I had a chance to go with my daughter's fourth-grade class to Bonanzaville and saw a one-room school hall, so it was very similar to where some of my great-grandparents taught. So I greatly value teachers, and I definitely agree that we need to have competitive compensation, especially living in a metropolitan area where we have other school districts that are very close to us and can be attractive to teachers if the culture at the West Fargo Public School District is not attractive. In talking with some friends who are teachers, I've heard of a growing number of teacher resignations, very concerned about the morale and the mental health of our staff. I strongly support having increased behavioral support for all staff, and not just having it available, but ensuring that the barriers that keep staff from accessing those resources are reduced or hopefully removed. I do think it's extremely important that the body of teachers looks like the students of West Fargo.
Thank you. Jim Jonas.
All right, thank you. Yeah, teachers in our, need to be valued, supported, and appreciated for the hard work they do, the amazing work they do. They're the most important factor we put in our, in our schools, our most important resource. Currently, North Dakota, our teachers are ranked 46 in pay, $52,000 is the average. Our state is flush with money, we can do better for them, and we must. One thing, teacher burnout, the load our teachers have, the workload, I call it initiative fatigue. We have too many things on their plate. I know our elementary teachers are struggling during their, during their prep periods because they're often covering recesses and so forth. So we, as a district, need to do better in supplying substitute teachers for them. And student behaviors, yeah. Many of my middle school and elementary teaching friends are seeing an increase in disruptive behavior and managing these behaviors. So we need to meet with our teachers, empower them to resolve these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. John Erickson.
Perfect, thank you. And, you know, shortage of teachers and certainly the value of the teachers are tremendous, and that's why essentially in the mission, and we call it learners, and learners include the teachers and the students, so we want to collaboratively work together. I have had the benefit of being on the negotiations team for the last eight years and really kind of working with the teachers, and we meet on a regular basis, and certainly the administration I know meets, and we really do sit down and work with the teachers and really just kind of discuss with them on what their needs are, because we want to make sure that, you know, we can all guess on what they need, but it really, when you sit down and work with them, you can be able to go through and, and kind of prioritize what we can do and with, whether it's pay, whether it's insurance, whether it's, you know, other benefits, TFFR, their retirement plan, and so on, trying to make sure that it's best. But certainly, you know, the goal is to have that best teacher in front of the best classroom that we have.
Thank you. I recognize that one minute's very short, but we're trying to maximize the number of questions we get, and with six candidates, that six minutes really goes by really fast. So we will back up a little, few seconds when we can, but try to keep your, consider that when you're answering your questions, that you've only got the one minute. Well, so our next question with Jessica Jackson. "With the school district making up the lion's share of property tax in West Fargo, what are your plans to alleviate the burden on the taxpayers in a city that is becoming more expensive to live in?"
Well, if there's one thing that we know, is education is expensive, and we are also the fastest-growing district in how long? So many years. We've been the fastest-growing district since I graduated and even before I graduated. So I definitely recognize also as a stakeholder myself, the burden of property taxes, and it is very, very important as we are looking forward to the future, as we are, as we are growing, as we are building, that we are continuing to remain a fiscally responsible district. And so to answer your question as far as what I would do, it would be to continue to work with our legislatures on viable property tax options. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Staples.
Well, with the influx of federal funding that has come into education over the past two years, our district has found some pretty innovative ways to sustainably fund new positions that alleviate stress on our educators and make targeted increases in pay and other staffing positions to stay competitive, and all while taking steps to make sure that taxpayers don't see a big jump in property tax that's caused by K-12 education. On top of the smart fiscal management already demonstrated by our board, I think we have the benefit of a rapidly growing tax base. The growing value of our, in our community of new property, whether residential, commercial, or otherwise, should allow the district to continue meeting the needs of our students without seeing major property tax growth.
Thank you. Jessica Jones.
I agree that the influx of federal funding can be extremely helpful in increasing teachers' salaries without putting the burden on our property tax taxes. I also strongly support having additional funds from the state of North Dakota. I think that many legislators and the governor are recognizing that we are in a great budget position heading into this upcoming year, and we have already identified that our teachers are one of our most valuable resources. Not that long ago, teachers would do anything for a job in North Dakota, and I know many teachers who had to leave and go to other states hoping to gain experience to come back to North Dakota. That is not as much the case anymore. Now teachers that grow up here are beginning, becoming educated and leaving, and I think it's very worthwhile for our state to put forth funding so that those teachers are very tempted to stay here in their home state.
Thank you. Jim Jonas.
All right, thank you. Yeah, property tax is, is a very complex issue, between state, state funding, federal funding, and local funding for our teachers and our students. Once again, North Dakota is flush with money. We can do a better job of placing a greater priority on education and supporting our teachers and our students at the state level, which I believe would help off, help alleviate some of the stress on our property taxes. So, once again, my commitment to the state legislature, that's one of the first things I'll be working on, if I'm lucky to get that position, and I know we, as a district, are really fiscally responsible. Our business managers, our business department make smart investments, and I know it's tough to please everyone, but we try to make just decisions with the tax dollars. So, thank you.
Thank you. John Erickson.
Thank you. I know we've had to, over the years, we've had a lot of, as we've been growing, the change in the legislature on the funding of the schools have certainly taken a huge part in our funding, because we've been growing over, you know, roughly 500 students a year. Well, up until just a few years ago, we were being paid on last year's numbers, so we were always $500 short or 500 students short. Thankfully, a couple of years ago, we may be able to, that started to change, and we're starting to grow and getting closer to that 100%, and once we get to that 100% funding, I believe we've got a few more years to go until we get there, that will certainly help. But really, the whole goal there is to continue working with legislatures to be able to keep that funding going, and, and then, along with, trying to be able to manage what we can do locally, and as Jim said, certainly making still investments and making sure that we have our, we're financing the new buildings that we can, the best we can, and use every dollar we have.
Thank you. Cole Davidson.
A wise person once told me that for any organization, when you look at their budget, there's a direct line between the dollars and what that organization values. So if I'm elected, I would commit to going through the budget line by line and ensuring that our dollars are backing the values of my constituents, of our constituents, students, parents, educators, members of the community. And if, if the line item doesn't back our values, I'd propose cuts. I would also be in favor of lobbying the state for increased funding, because as Jim said, our state is flush right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mark Staples. "Teacher morale is reportedly low. Incidents of violence is part of the reason for this low morale in some, that we've seen in some schools. Some teachers are fearful of being injured at work. What are your thoughts about safety measures for, to protect students and faculty?"
Well, you know, I think that the behavioral issues we're seeing are really driven by a number of things, but one of those has been being, the major disruption that they faced over the past two years in getting back into the regimen of being in school and how to adapt to that. So I think that, you know, it's not a huge surprise to anybody that we're seeing a rise in those behaviors. What I will say is that I think that, you know, we are doing a pretty good job of ensuring that students feel safe on the whole. I mean, obviously, there are isolated incidents, but, you know, our special education department and others have really been working hard to try to invest in our behavioral specialists that can intervene when necessary and take students out of the classroom and really make sure that we're mitigating those as best as we can. But we know that there's going to be a natural ramp-up as we get back to the normalcy of learning in school.
Thank you. Jessica Jones.
In my job as a psychologist, I work with children and families daily. I work with many elementary school students, and I'm well aware that in the city, or excuse me, in the West Fargo School District, there are, can be quite different policies to address behavioral concerns from one elementary school to another. We do identify that behavioral health concerns have been skyrocketing for all ages, and it absolutely is at least partially related to the pandemic. I strongly support increasing access to behavioral health services for students while they are in school. Telehealth services has made this a very attractive and convenient option that helps students and families. I also support teachers across the board having consistent training, no matter what the principal might be of their elementary school, so they can feel supported and they can feel that they are safe in their working environment.
Thank you. Jim Jonas.
Yeah, we are seeing a spike in behavioral issues at our elementaries and middle schools. I had quite, I had several teachers come talk to me the other day when I was visiting one of our elementaries on being hit and bitten, and they hadn't, they didn't sign up to have that. So we, as a district, need to do more and a better job of getting behavioral specialists hired and into our schools. And I know in our elementaries and our middle schools, they've started a social, emotional learning, for example, with our elementary kids, to develop respect for others, their cultural differences, and champs, they process, they call it champs, on dealing with the differences among the different students. But we, we definitely need to empower our teachers to have the ability to feel safe. And, and a lot of this starts, too, with the parents getting the help, the support they need at home and with our schools.
Thank you. John Erickson.
Thank you. Yeah, teacher morale is huge, and I think it's even just worker morale in general, because there's because there's a lot of, even in business, there's a lot of people trying to either go back into the office or not, or stay home. And certainly there's been huge changes for the teachers as they kind of work through it. With COVID, all of a sudden, you know, thrust into a virtual device, then a hybrid and then, and, and really, you know, we're a year out of that and we're still trying to kind of figure out what the new norm is going to be, if there is going to be a new norm, along with defining that. But I think the biggest thing is, is really trying to continue our recruitment and fill the positions we have so we can get the teachers back into their regular schedules and be able to have that supporting time, the prep time, so they'd be able to do it and then they have the support really to empower them and then build those communities up again in each one of the schools.
Thank you. Cole Davidson.
If students don't, or if teachers don't feel safe in the learning environment, how can we expect students to feel safe in the learning environment, let alone learn and grow? And so it's my view that there should be a zero tolerance policy for any sort of violent outburst or activity in the classroom. And any student who acts violently in the school setting should be removed from the learning environment. How long should that be? I think we can take that on a case by case basis. And we don't want to leave that student behind. We obviously want to get them behavioral support. But one student shouldn't be allowed to disrupt and damage the learning environment for the teachers and for the rest of the students. And so I think we need to take a strong look at disciplinary policies and enforce them, enforce them swiftly to protect the learning environment for all students and to get those with behavioral issues the help that they need.
Thank you. Jessica Jackson.
Yeah, so first of all, no teacher should ever go to work feeling unsafe, period. So I fully support 100% implementing any type of additional support we can in addition to what we have been. As I've visited the schools over the last four years of my term, one question that I've asked many times of both teachers and staff in the schools because incidents of violence were prevalent before COVID. So this isn't new from COVID. And I've been asking this question of kind of what's happening, what's going on? And one thing that I would like to explore more and further, if I were to be elected again, would be family, family engagement. Because I've found that teachers and staff had said, one of the reasons that they see for the incidence of violence are lack of family engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we start with Jessica Jones. Students with special needs receive individualized education plans called an IEP. Even with an IEP in place, some students' needs remain unmet. How do you plan to enforce IEP implementation?
In my job as a psychologist, I work with children doing psychological testing to identify if children do have neurodevelopmental disorders. And then I provide recommendations to inform the individualized education plans. I think it is extremely important that all of those needs are met. There, this is a very complex process and it needs to be individualized to fit each student. There is a lot of support that can be provided to families. I work with many parents who very much want to play an integral role in their child's education. They often feel helpless. They're not sure how to communicate to school. They're not sure if the child's IEP is being followed. They're not getting daily reports. All they might know is this was a good or bad week. And then all of a sudden, there's a huge crisis and their child is out of school and they're, they're told, you need to go to this appointment or you can't bring them back for a certain period of time. I think supporting our parents through many resources that could be provided through additional funding would very much help them to be informed advocates for their children.
Thank you. Jim Jonas.
All right. Thank you. I know our special education programs at West Fargo are, are very well respected throughout the state. A lot of people that move into the community of the metro area here moved to West Fargo because of, if they have a special needs child. I know Rachel Cuness, Rachel Cuness, thank you guys. Those of you who don't know, I have a speech impediment. And her and her staff do a very good job of, of working with our special ed kids. Just the other day, I was at an elementary once again and one of the parents moved to West Fargo because of that. And I know with the IEPs, being a former teacher, that the colleagues I worked with took them very seriously. And our elementary teachers and our middle school teachers are working hard to meet those goals and those needs of the students. And there's always room for improvement. Being a former teacher and coach, you're always trying to get better and, and our district is always looking to get better themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. John Erickson.
Sure. Thank you. IEPs are always certainly very detailed, trying to, and a lot of the counselors put a lot of work into each one, have seen a grown need for kids with more, so there are just more IEPs to be able to manage. And certainly the growing, I've just heard paperwork, just the growing time to be able to keep up with the administration piece of it. And even, so it comes down to be able to, you know, if there's different ways we can try to help them, if we can have, be creative and be able to help them get the paperwork done, the administrative work done, then they'd be able to spend more time with the kids. And certainly that's their goal and that's would be our goal. So, you know, as we continue to move through that, again, it's just kind of recruiting, filling those positions that we have so we can support the teachers and what they want to do.
Implementation of IEPs is somewhat limited, but what I would do is educate myself. I would speak with parents, with teachers, administrators, specialists who are responsible for implementing IEPs, for recognizing when IEPs are needed. I would have discussions with them about where are the bottlenecks? Where are the, the issues? Why aren't students getting these services that they need? And then I would address those bottlenecks, those issues as, as they arise in, in conversation and in dialogue with educators, parents and teachers.
Thank you. Jessica Jackson.
Yeah, so as was mentioned prior, so as you know, IEP programs are very complex. Each child clearly is very different, has different needs and their IEPs reflect. I have been visiting schools, for example. And also I relate this back to, as well as family engagement, is how can that be implemented to, to help our students as well that have our IEP programs? Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Staples.
Yeah, well, I think there are a few major tenants of successfully implementing IEPs. And I think that's, as folks have said, family engagement and staff recruitment. On the staffing front, we need to continually recruit the staff that can successfully, you know, do the work required by these labor intensive and extremely important programs. That's one of the areas I think the district has had one of the hardest times filling. I think there's at least five behavioral specialist programs or positions open in the district right now. And, you know, our special education department is always looking to recruit more talented and qualified professionals. On the family front, I agree that engagement is key. You know, I was speaking with a parent the other day who's, who just praised our district's ability to, to engage with her family on their child's IEP and really credited our educators with a huge turnaround in her child's behavioral needs. So I, you know, I think supporting those, those interactions with parents, between their teachers, building administrators will be extremely important if we want to continually successfully implement IEPs.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Jim Jonas. And this is actually a question that's been asked to pass specifically to you because of your situation and that you are running for the North Dakota State Legislature and for the West Fargo School Board. Will you be able to give appropriate time and attention to each position if elected to both?
Yes. Those of you that know me know my work ethic. I'm committed to West Fargo. And I've always had two jobs as a teacher and a coach at the level I taught at and coached at. I always had two jobs as a teacher and a coach. My coaching hours would be five, six hours a day. So yes, I have no problems. And politics have never played a role in my decisions on the board. So, and with today's technology, I figure I've already worked it out with Ed Mitchell to do Zoom when I'm out, out in Bismarck. So yes.
Each of you may decide to answer that as you wish, but you do still have your one minute. John Erickson.
Both of them, I think you certainly could. I'm not really, I commend Jim for trying and going for it and certainly having his passion to be able to go through. I know certainly working with the school board and, and the legislature, there is, through the last few years, we haven't been able to go out to meet with the legislatures when they've been in session, but previously we have. And it has been very meaningful both for us and them to be able to get to know each other and understand the roadblocks that we both have. So certainly it'd be a benefit to the board to be able to, you know, have a member out there along with, you know, vice versa. So it's always good to have those individuals that know both.
Thank you. Cole Davidson.
I believe Jim, and since I have a free 55 seconds or so, I'd like to tell my children, Gabrielle, Oliver and Noah, I love you.
Jessica Jackson.
Well, if there's one thing that our current board is passionate about, it is our kids. And, you know, we, we teach our kids that they can do anything they set their minds to. So if Jim believes that that is what he can do, I fully support that and I believe he can. Thank you.
Mark Staples.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think no, no real direct answer to that. I think it's great when people want to get involved in public service and the more people that want to be involved in government, the better. I think government works best when more people do it. So I'm fully supportive of that.
Jessica Jones.
I strongly support any actions that would increase potential legislative funding for the students of the West Fargo School District. I'm also very pleased to hear that it would be a possibility for a school board member to engage via Zoom. I think that making, making the meetings themselves more accessible would be a vast improvement for the district. And if that was something that could be increased such to have streaming of school board meetings or any information regarding what happens at the school board meetings more available to all parents, not just parents who are able to make it regularly at 6:00 PM on a weeknight, I think that would be a great improvement for the district overall.
Thank you. We start again with John Erickson. Do you think there was a significant loss of learning for students due to the pandemic? And if so, how do you propose identifying and helping students recover from that loss?
Certainly there was a, a loss of learning maybe from the brick and mortar, be able to kind of go through it. I think there's, there's a lot of ways that, you know, kids learned how they could learn the best and some really thrived and be able to go where they could study on their own and kind of move forward. Others had struggled. So certainly there was maybe some loss in that, but we also learned how to help those kids kind of continue to sell, how to use the virtual learning to be able to help them move forward and continue to move forward. And there was a lot of different things that we learned to be able to, you know, continue to move forward with the use of technology and a lot of the small classrooms. So even just on the virtual or the hybrid where we had small classrooms and we'd split the cohort, where we have half one day and half the other day, there was a lot of great learning that happened there. So there was a lot of, we learned a lot of things, but certainly there was a lot of maybe standard loss of learning, maybe in brick and mortar.
You can finish your thought.
No, well, just like brick and mortar, but I think we learned a lot and be able to support students in other ways.
Cole Davidson.
I would say yes, that I agree that there was a significant loss of learning during the pandemic and I would attribute much of that loss of learning to moving to a virtual model. Not, not to detract at all from the educators who were tasked with putting this virtual education model together at very short notice in March of 2020. I think they did a great job with that, given the circumstances. However, we continue to have planned virtual learning days built into the calendar and we're using those virtual learning days as well on snow days, for example. So last year alone, I believe we had, I think it was nine or 11 virtual learning days. And on some of those days, my daughter, who is seven, spent 45 minutes or less doing self-paced activities with no interaction at all. And I don't think that that's a replacement for a face-to-face learning day. So if elected, I would move and advocate for policy that would do away with planned virtual learning days and, and potentially do away with virtual learning days for inclement weather.
Jessica Jackson.
Yeah, so have there, has there been a loss of learning? Yes, there has been a loss of learning. We know that and we recognize that. One thing that we said as a board, when COVID first came upon us, is we were going through this, is what have we learned as we were making decisions? And so what we have also learned going through this, as we are identifying the loss of learning with our students, is our teachers and staff have been working with the children to identify areas where that loss of learning have occurred. And so going back, circling back, what have we learned? We have learned that we can adapt, we can pivot and we can move forward. And so we will also continue to do that as we identify further areas of loss and learning and how we address that.
Mark Staples.
Well, I'd like to begin by commending teachers and families for their incredible work to adapt to a situation that nobody ever thought they would face in, in our K-12 buildings. I mean, it was extremely rapid and fairly effective, given the circumstances. I was also amazed by the resiliency of students and their adaptability. They had never thought that they would be learning from home and for the most part, they did it quite well. There are obviously students that struggle more and, and the district is working to help bring those students back up to speed. But we definitely know there's a loss in learning caused by the pandemic. We see it in the monitoring reports that the district receives regularly. As a school board member, I want to continue driving funding to those subject area interventionists that we've been able to fund through federal funding and other avenues that really can work directly with students who were affected the most by the interruption of learning and make sure that everybody can get back to where they started before the pandemic.
Jessica Jones.
There clearly was a loss in academic learning and there was also a loss of structure and consistency for children, for families, for teachers, for, for all staff. And I think that is something that is going to continue to impact our whole society for quite a while. And having services that are informed of that will help all of us to continue to adjust as we navigate this new territory. I do think resiliency has also been gained and we can continue to build on that by further prioritizing social and emotional curriculums for children and for parents. There has been significant stress and even trauma that have, the rates have risen significantly during the course of the pandemic. If we are able to have increased access to behavioral health services, whether it is for students or staff during the school day, that is one thing that can greatly improve each person's ability to adjust and to cope effectively.
Thank you. Jim Jonas.
Yeah, there was a, a loss of learning during the pandemic. And I'll commend our teachers for doing an outstanding job of adapting their, their curriculum and their lessons and working from home during the heart of the pandemic and, and then the virtual learning, the way they put together lessons and so forth. So yeah, there was a loss of learning. And what our district did, especially in the, our elementary students, reading and math, we brought in more specialists to help. We got several grants to help hire more elementary reading and math specialists to come in to work on getting those students caught up. And the resiliency and the adaptability that Mark said of our students is amazing. Going through COVID and, and seeing them flourish right now at the end of the school year, an excitement going on. So once again, I'll commend our teachers with a great job they did.
Thank you. Next question, we start with Cole Davidson. How would you deal with efforts to ban books in the school? Should such, should such efforts arise?
So when you say efforts to ban books, I'm assuming that it relates to news that we've seen across the nation. Books that are very sexual, sexually explicit and maybe border on pornography or have actual pornography in the themes. I, I don't believe that those types of books have any place in our schools. If the, if the book, if the book promotes any sort of sexually explicit material, if it has pornographic language in it, I, I think it would be up to a parent whether or not they want their child to have access to that and should not be left up to the school.
Jessica Jackson.
I will echo that statement made by Mr. Davidson. While I absolutely do not agree that items and books of nature, any type of publication of sexual nature, pornography, et cetera, belong in schools, I absolutely believe it's up to parents to decide what's appropriate for their children.
Mark Staples.
Yeah, our, our district already has good systems in place to, to vet the literature and curriculum that comes into our buildings. And so I think we have, we're well set up for that. But you know, I think more broadly, when we talk about our schools, I think we have to recognize that there, there's a spectrum of what's appropriate for our learners. Obviously, you know, we're not going to have our second grade not going to have our second graders reading books about foreign policy, whereas, you know, you can start bringing in more complex discussions and big topics for high school students who recognize that they're smart, thoughtful individuals. So, you know, I think, you know, taking a broad stance and saying, yes, we should, you know, always be ready to ban this type of book or that type of book, I don't think that's really a reasonable way to think about the curriculum that's in our schools. I think we should respect our students at their age and maturity, and trust that the curriculum specialists and the teachers and librarians in our schools are doing a very good job to work towards the best interests of our students.
Jessica Jones.
When considering efforts to ban books, I think it would be particularly important for a particular book to look at what group of individuals are trying to ban that book, and the reason for why. I think if we are concerned about teacher morale, it would be very important to ask the teachers and identify the topic experts in that area, whether it be librarians, or teachers who are very knowledgeable about a particular subject, and are knowledgeable about child development, and identifying what's the difference and what's appropriate for a third grader versus a ninth grader. I strongly support our teachers, and I think that when we talk about them having too many things on their plate that contribute to burnout, the idea of worrying about censorship and wondering, should I even add this to my curriculum this year, that is a huge piece that can contribute to burnout, and I want to support our teachers to teach to the best of their ability without adding more challenges to their plate.
Jim Jonas.
Yeah, I believe our librarians and our curriculum specialists do a good job of monitoring what's going into our libraries, and finding the age-appropriate books, and anything of controversial, controversial subject matters, they remove. So I think they've done a nice job on that, so I feel confident in their ability.
Thank you. John Erickson.
I agree with most, as we kind of go through it, really, there, you know, there's a policy to be able to go through and take a look at each book, and to be able to kind of work through that. And I know the teachers have a huge input into that, and most of them read those books many times, know exactly what's in them, and as they're going through it. So I would just, you know, really work with the teachers and support what they want, and really kind of what books they were, would want to use as part of the education process.
Thank you. The next question, we start with Jessica Jackson. My understanding of the, and this is the writer, okay. My understanding of the transgender policy is that the parents do not need to be informed of a student in presenting, if a student is presenting differently than their birth gender. What is your opinion of this policy?
My opinion of this policy is, it is up to parents. You know, parents are the first teachers of their children, and I do believe it is up to, and it is a right of a parent to know how their child is presenting within the schools.
Mark Staples.
You know, I really think that this issue that has, it's an issue that's been blown out of proportion across the country and used as kind of a flashpoint. You know, I think, first and foremost, we have to focus on making sure that our students feel welcome, supported, and safe in our schools. And so I think, you know, it's really unfair to our students to try to pull out a population and target them and make them as, you know, a talking point. And so, you know, I think that students and families can work that out themselves, and the school district doesn't have a role to play in that conversation.
Jessica Jones.
I'm not aware of that policy, and I'm not aware of the rationale that would support that policy. That being said, as a psychologist, I work with individuals who identify as transgender, particularly adolescents. There is strong data to show that behavioral health concerns are particularly increasing in that population, and that the solutions to address that is through learning for that individual and for the people around them. So for their teachers, their fellow students, and especially their parents and their family members. And so rather than focusing on whether or not parents need to be notified of whether or not an individual is questioning their gender identity, I think it would be much more helpful to focus on sharing education that promotes inclusion and acceptance and support.
Jim Jonas.
Yeah, the transgender policy, being transgender is up to the student and their parents. And I know in West Fargo, all students are respected, and we try to include inclusion with all of them, and we're committed to inclusion and legal rights of all our students. So we, as a board, will defend any students as they go through our school system.
Thank you. John Erickson.
Yeah, I really, it's a commitment to the student, and really kind of working with that one, students. Each student is an individual, and each student would, you would want to be able to work with them individually, because everything is going to be a little bit different. There's not going to be really one policy to be able to manage that. And then I think education, most of, I think everybody up here said education for the students, for the teachers, and, you know, I guess my hope would be the student would want to bring in their family to be able to have that conversation, and which would include in the parents. But a lot of times, there's kind of a, you know, tug of war there as you're kind of going through. So I think it would be working with the student to be able to do that, and then have them, and then pull the parents in, but fully respecting the student on that privacy until that time.
Thank you. Cole Davidson.
I'm very familiar with this policy. Right within the policy, it actually compels staff to, in the case of a transitioning student, to use language with parents that would keep the transition a secret from the parents. I believe that's wrong. If elected, I would advocate to change this policy that would require parent notification. I would also encourage working with the student, being sensitive to their situation, their identity. That's a student, student issue. But I would, I'm absolutely an advocate of requiring notification of parents, as they are the primary stakeholders in their child's growth, development, and education.
Thank you. Next section, question, we start with Mark Staples. Over the last 50 years, behavioral scientists have found that more positive reinforcement leads to better behavioral outcomes, and punishments can exacerbate behavioral issues. How do you plan to follow the science of behavior as a school board member?
Well, I think this is one of those areas where, and this often comes up as a board member, is that, you know, we hire experts in our district for a reason, and so that they can create policies and execute on those policies, so that board members don't have to be experts in behavioral science. That being said, I think that, you know, when we have, when we have invested in, you know, additional behavioral supports and, you know, additional staff on those fronts, it's with the goal of having, you know, more positive reinforcement, better interaction for students, so that they aren't feeling isolated from their peers, that students with behavioral issues aren't being pulled out of the classroom so much, and losing that opportunity to learn. So I think that, you know, the district has done a good job of that, and we continue to make that transition forward into following the best science. And that's, you know, I really do trust the experts that we have on our staff to do that to the best of their ability.
Thank you. Jessica Jones.
In my work as a psychologist, I work regularly with children and parents, as well as sharing some information with teachers about the ways that children's behavior can be very much well-supported, with attention to positive reinforcement of the behaviors we want to see, and with a very strategic way of responding to the behaviors that are less effective for that child. I think it is really important for school board members to do the same. I think it's very important for there to be positive reinforcement to noticing the things that teachers are doing to excel, things that are happening to improve teacher morale, when students are excelling, when our local schools are showing vast improvements in learning, particularly with the loss of learning that we've seen. And we really see that there's no ceiling to what positive reinforcement can offer. I also think it's important that we are attentive to how we respond to individuals addressing things through ineffective means, and that we realize that, as the cliche says, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, that we realize that does not work very well.
Thank you. Jim Jonas.
Yeah, our school district has hired a lot of behavioral specialists that go in and work with our middle school and our elementary teachers, and the CHAMPs program at our elementary schools. If you see that in action, how respectful our kids are. So behavior management or positive reinforcement isn't about rule enforcement to misbehaviors, but it's about getting those, getting those reinforcing routines, expectations, and creating conflict resolutions between students. So our staff, our staff and our students have high expectations with each other. So, thank you.
John Erickson.
Certainly with positive reinforcement, you're going to have more opportunities than you would otherwise. And the district certainly has put in different support systems. I know Jim has mentioned CHAMPs, there's MTSS, there's certainly other ones, and that I can't remember all the different acronyms, but I know we kind of go through. But we continue to, the school continues to hire and use the specialists, the behavior specialists, to be able to help with those students that be able to do that. But certainly, we want to empower those teachers and certainly have that support to be able to go through and create that positive environment, just because it will increase the opportunities as we kind of go through it, and really empower the teachers, teachers and students to move forward and create those communities.
Cole Davidson.
I would be a strong proponent, I am a strong proponent, of using positive reinforcement to elicit desired behavior. We recently had one of my kid's principals reach out to us to commend them on some positive behavior, and we tell our child, and they light up, and they did that behavior more that day. So positive reinforcement to elicit desired behavior, that's, that's the fun part, right? And I would, I would rely on the behavioral specialists to help train and implement policies or programs that increase positive reinforcement. But on the flip side, when there's, when there's undesired behavior, I think that we need to use positive reinforcement to change that behavior until that behavior becomes a detriment to the learning environment for other students. Then we might need to pursue other strategies.
Jessica Jackson.
Well, I absolutely 100% support positive reinforcement. That's no secret in child development academia literature, and really, you know, fundamental kind of parenting even 101, is we find our kids respond better to positive reinforcement than punishment, not to say that punishment doesn't have its place. However, yes, absolutely support positive reinforcement, and our team here in West Fargo, as they implement the behavior practices, including what's been mentioned prior, CHAMPs and MTSS, absolutely support that, as well going forward to continually implement the positive reinforcement. We have principals that will, you know, call students and say, hey, you know, such and such child did this today, wanted you to know about it. It was a great, you know, great day. So it's things like that that are happening in our district as well, that I'm proud of, that again, really build upon that type of positive reinforcement that I support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, which is our 10th. Applaud yourselves, doing so well here. Let's start with Jessica Jones. What is your position on directing public tax dollars to private schools or charter schools, either through vouchers or other means?
I'm a strong supporter of public education, and I think that our public dollars should support our public education. I think that the goal for myself as a parent for the West Fargo School District is so that the quality of our education is so stellar that parents would have no reason to consider sending their kids to any other schools. Even if they would choose to do that, I still believe that their public property tax dollars should focus on public education, as I think that when we have a very strong public education system, it improves the entire community, not just the students at the school or their families, but rather shows up in benefits for everyone who lives in the community.
Jim Jonas.
Public tax dollars belong in public schools. The benefit for our students. So, brilliant.
John Erickson.
I, Jim said it, I like the way Jim said it, public tax dollars belong in public schools, and really kind of supporting that school. We've worked really hard to be able to have that curriculum in the schools and have it viable across all different levels, and really kind of supporting that through our tax dollars is, I don't know how we'd choose otherwise.
Cole Davidson.
I actually do believe that the dollars should follow the student. I believe that if the dollars follow the students, it would create an environment where, as I said earlier, dollars, there's a direct line between dollars and values. And so if the dollars follow the students, we'd see real quickly where the community members, the tax base, the individuals who are paying the taxes, where their values lie, and it would create an environment and an incentive for all schools to serve the tax base better.
Jessica Jackson.
I understand this is, can be for some a very complex issue, because I've certainly, you know, contemplated myself, dollars go with the student. However, I do believe fundamentally public tax dollars should stay with the public schools. I believe we have a fundamental responsibility to educate our children for the future. I know someone paid for me with their tax dollars, and I'm paying for other children with, with my tax dollars. So fundamentally, that is what I support.
Mark Staples.
I firmly believe that there's no better investment of my tax dollars than in a strong public school system. It's the absolute foundation of our nation, directly affects all aspects of our community, from building a stronger workforce, to informing our students as future voters, determining the policies that govern our community. Diverting public funds away from public education to charter schools or private schools is not going to decrease anyone's property taxes or increase the quality of education. It would send your tax dollars to schools that have less transparency and less transparent governance. So well-funded public schools are just simply the best investment in the future of West Fargo.
Thank you. Next question, we start with Jim Jonas. What is your plan to recruit more qualified bus drivers?
Yeah, pay. We need to, we did a market study in the fall of the last school, the school year, and compensation, it's very competitive out there with, between the school districts, Fargo, West Fargo, the smaller districts, Valley Bus. So the key driving force is paying their bus drivers better. And we did a market, our market study, that was one of the, the first thing that came back, said we need to pay them better. And beginning about the, beginning in the year, beginning in this year, in January, we raised their rate. So once again, it all comes down to money. Money solves a lot of problems in education.
John Erickson.
Recruitment is, working on recruitment. I know the base of individuals out there that are working and looking at those different types of jobs, whether it be bus driver, repairer, or whoever in the school, certainly working and continuing to increase that recruitment, and find out what they're looking for. Certainly, pay always helps, but I think there's a lot of other things that, you know, we all want to look for also in that part. But right now, just with the, kind of the shortage of workers in general, it's really a tough market to be able to do it. So just continue reaching out any way we can to recruit those drivers, and certainly work on, with the current drivers, to retain them, because there are veterans, they're going to be able to help us pull forward with and recruit other new drivers.
Thank you. Cole Davidson.
I would agree that pay is definitely an issue in this labor market. There are many companies who are experiencing staffing shortages, and we see the hourly wages going through the roof. I mean, it's painted on the windows of McDonald's, right? So pay is definitely an issue. But I would also say, what's, what's the work culture like for bus drivers? And I don't know, right? Do they feel valued and appreciated? I don't know. I would hope that they do, but I don't know if there are any programs currently in place to recognize bus drivers, to get to know them, to appreciate them. If there aren't policies in place, I would definitely advocate for that, and try and create a culture where bus drivers feel like they're part of the community, they're part of the school, they're part of an organization that cares about them.
Jessica Jackson.
Yeah, so as been previously mentioned, of course, yes, we, there was a market study completed, and the district responded by increasing the pay of that team. So we've been actively engaged in conversations with the, with the bus barn and that team regarding their needs, and of course, pay was one of them. We know our bus drivers are valuable, our kids need to get to and from school. One area that, you know, is unique to that role is the flexible work schedule. So potentially seeking out individuals that have that ability to as well have that flexible work schedule. But again, we, we as a district were committed to being a competitive employer, and this is certainly one area that will continue to be looked at and evaluated as needed.
Mark Staples.
When I was a student at the Cheyenne Ninth Grade Center, I had a class every day that I had to come over to West Fargo High School for, and I had a bus driver named Diane, who was my lunch buddy for an entire year. And we would sit and, I'd sit up at the front of the bus, and we'd chat, and, you know, every single day, I could count on seeing her at 11:30. So I know firsthand how important our bus drivers are to our students, and how they feel welcome in our district. And, you know, as my fellow board And, you know, as my fellow board members have mentioned, we did that competitive wage study, and we've voted to increase their pay. But we know that it's an extremely competitive labor market, and it's going to be, it's going to continue to be a challenge going into the year ahead and potentially beyond. And so we have to think about how we can optimize the routes that our bus drivers are taking and what we can do to alleviate some of the stress that they face and, you know, duplicative routes or waiting too long in the morning. So, we're working as a district to think how we can solve that in addition to paying bus drivers more.
Jessica Jones.
I strongly support the district identifying whether or not the pay is competitive, and especially putting in place a plan to ensure that the pay stays competitive. Beyond pay, I would also be very curious about the morale and culture for bus drivers. Whether it is how much time they get to talk to other bus drivers, or what does that environment feel like on their bus route. And we've been talking today about how all of us have been experiencing a lot of stress, and we're seeing increasing behavioral concerns regarding children. I would have to imagine that shows up on a bus as well. And making sure that that bus driver feels like they have support, they know how to respond, they can ensure that they're driving safely. I think those are strong priorities. I would also be curious to see if morale can be improved by flexibility in scheduling, whether they need to do the same bus route five days a week, or if they're able to flex off at different times, if they need that for their family, as well as if there's other benefits that would improve the attractiveness of working for West Fargo School District.
Thank you. Next question, we go back to John Erickson. Many teachers feel that they don't have enough time to plan lessons and are not adequately paid for that work. How do you plan to remedy this situation?
Really trying to help hire individuals to be able to, so they can get their prep time back. A lot of times right now with the shortage, shortage of teachers, shortage of substitutes to be able to do that, a lot of times their prep times, they're going and helping other teachers out when needed. If a teacher's out for the day and they have, you know, eight different hours, you may have, you know, they may, another teacher may go and take, you know, hour or two trying to fill in to be able to kind of make it throughout the day. And I think it's really to focus on trying to get our positions filled, so all the teachers have their prep times to be able to go through it. Otherwise, they are using their prep time, it's after school, it's before school, and throughout the day, they just don't have time to be able to do that because they're supporting their other teachers.
Cole Davidson.
I honestly would just echo what John said. Get them the support that they need, so they have that prep time back in their day. Get fully staffed through a lot of the strategies that we've talked about tonight, and get them the time that they need while they're on the clock. Teachers are people too. They have families, they have things they attend to in the evening, kids, activities, and they need to have that time. They should be paid for the work that they're putting in while they're on the clock.
Jessica Jackson.
Yeah, so, you know, our teachers can't teach effectively if they don't have time to prep, right? No different than if I'm going into a meeting and I haven't prepped appropriately for that client meeting, I can't do my job effectively. No different than our teachers. They need time to prep. And absolutely, it's been a challenge. That's absolutely true. Their prep time has been cut, they've been filling in, they've been scrambling in, you know, many days too. So, absolutely recognize that. They've had too much on their plate. And so, you know, again, going forward, the district has been working to, again, attract and retain as well as people to fill those positions so that they can get their prep time back. Because that's absolutely crucial and definitely required.
Mark Staples.
Like a lot of other issues that we're talking about tonight, retention and recruitment is a big driver of what we're, of the problem that we're seeing. You know, I think one of the solutions that the district has been exploring is offering more flexibility as teachers complete their professional development, and letting them do that at a time that works for them. And so their schedules are a little less rigid when they're in the classroom, or when they're in the building, and they can adapt, use their time differently, and see how they see fit. We've also been very conscious of not over-incentivizing or pressuring our teachers to use their prep time for something. You know, they've done it, they've stepped in. But as a school board, we've urged the administration to make sure that we're not offering rates so high for substitute teaching during your prep time that teachers feel like they have no choice but to do that. So, you know, I think it really does come back to ensuring that we can do what we can to recruit more teachers, retain the ones that we have, and make sure that we're putting guardrails in place to protect their time.
Thank you. Jessica Jones.
I strongly believe teachers should be paid for their prep time. I think preparing their curriculum and to educate their students each day is a very important part of what they do. And they need to be able to have that time and count on the idea that that time will be available in their schedule. One way that we can do that is by ensuring that other positions are filled, whether it is having a large pool of substitute teachers, whether it is ensuring that paraprofessional roles are filled, school nurse roles are filled, school counselor roles are filled. In talking with many teachers, they are identifying that they are doing a lot of the work that could be done and probably should be done by school counselors and social workers. And so I would strongly support increasing the amount of those roles within the West Fargo School District.
Jim Jonas.
Yeah, we really need to ensure that our teachers get their prep time. Many of them do take their first, usually it's their first hour of the day during their prep time to sub. And I think they get paid $28 an hour to sub for that. Then if they choose, I'm familiar with high school, then it drops down like $20 per hour. So, I know Superintendent Sledy's been talking about hiring more substitutes that would just go from class to class throughout the day. And they would be stationed like at Horace Elementary or Harwood Elementary, and their main job would be just to sub as the need arises throughout the day. Because many of our teachers leave for appointments and child activities. So, and yes, we do need to be very considerate of the demands we place on our teachers. Once again, the initiative fatigue they have, all the things that are on their plate. And I know the workload is very difficult. Teaching's a difficult profession. It's one of the more challenging professions you're going to come across.
Thank you. We'll start the next question with Cole Davidson. Do you think there is a proper balance between the arts and athletics in West Fargo schools?
Um, I do believe there is. I, you know, haven't counted the number of art opportunities versus the number of athletic opportunities and the level of interest in the students and whether there's a balance there. I have friends whose children are engaged in the arts. My children are engaged in the arts, whether it's music or theater. My perception is that there's a pretty good balance. I'm open to having that discussion. If anybody wants to argue a different point of view or argue that there's an imbalance in some way, let's talk about it. I do believe the arts are important. My undergraduate degree, like I said, is in theater arts. I believe that arts open up perspectives and different ways of viewing the world and appreciating the world. So, I think a balance is important, and from my view and my experience, I think there is a pretty good balance.
Jessica Jackson.
Yes, I do believe that West Fargo Public Schools offers a good balance between the arts and athletics. Both are phenomenally important, and both very much contribute to the developing child and their ability to find their interests and their passion. So, we offer a great range of both athletic activities, theater arts, arts, drawing, painting, lots of options. So, I do agree that we do offer a good balance.
Mark Staples.
Yeah, I think there's no better way to grow as a well-rounded student than to try out as many extracurricular activities and elective classes as you possibly can and get a hands-on experience that helps you grow as a leader, helps you learn time management skills. And I think that the district is doing a very good job of supporting students in that endeavor. We had a meeting with our learner advisory board a few weeks ago, and I posed that question to our students, that do you feel like you have enough access to your extracurricular activities? Are there barriers? Are there things you're missing? And every single student that I've talked with has said, no, we feel really satisfied with what we can do. I can explore my interests. There's clubs that have 100 people, clubs that have two people. And we're really good as a district at supporting them and providing, you know, advisors for those clubs and those interests. And I think that that's something that we have to continue investing in. You know, as a student, I was more the arts guy than the sports guy. But, you know, I do think that giving students the ability to access all sorts of varieties makes them very well-rounded for the rest of their life.
Jessica Jones.
From my experience thus far, I think so far, we've done a pretty good job having a proper balance between arts, clubs, and sports. I think it's very important that the district support all students, including the interests of all students, and ensuring that the resources are similarly available from one student's interest to another. I do think that we also need to consider our use of resources as parents and families in terms of time and attendance. I've attended many wonderful, exhilarating sporting events at Cheyenne High School and seen stands that are filled. And then the next week, come to a family mental health forum with the school board at Liberty Middle School that, where the attendance was a small portion of what was initially expected, of parents and families wanting to attend. So, I think that also comes down to parents and families monitoring how they're using their resources and what they're emphasizing by their use of those resources.
Jim Jonas.
Yeah, I believe we have a fantastic opportunity for our students to excel in music, theater, all our co-curricular activities. I was just at Jeffrey Mueller's retirement concert the other night. Fantastic. Great turnout. Our athletic programs, we have a wide variety of, wide variety of sports for our kids, and we're growing. We're looking at girls wrestling and adding baseball teams, and we're looking at continuing to add programs to benefit our kids. And one of the most enjoyable things is for going to elementaries to their theaters, to their music concerts, to watch them thrive and have fun, and the job our music teachers do. So, that's one of the perks of the job, is you go to these elementary schools and you get to see the excitement and the joy of these kids. So, thank you.
John Erickson.
And as the rest, I do feel that we do have a good balance between arts and athletics. And I think one of our strong suits is be able to go through, or continue reevaluating what is, you know, if we have numbers and where we have numbers to either grow programs or maybe cut back on programs, or maybe we can co-op with other schools in the nearby district to be able to make sure that we have the program that we want. So, we're always reevaluating whether it be sports, is a lot of the co-ops, or certainly in the theaters and support. And then even in the clubs, I know Mark said there were some smaller clubs in there. As long as you have, I think, one or two people and you can find an advisor, you can create your own club. So, I think it's open to be able to have those conversations. If there's something the kids are interested, they can even go ahead and create their own.
We're going to sneak in one more question before we go to closing statements. We start with Jessica Jackson. If elected, how will you ensure that parental input is heard and reflected in the decision-making process of the board? Do you think parents should have more say in their children's education? Explain.
Absolutely. Parents are the fundamental teachers of their children. They absolutely have input into their children's education. They always have, and they always should. I absolutely advocate attending board meetings, of course, as well as continual conversations between the teachers, the staff, principals. And it's certainly, you know, very important for parents as well to take that initiative with their children and their teachers to do that. This also goes back to something I mentioned earlier is family engagement. And that's something that I'd like to explore further, should I be elected again to a second term, is exploring more family engagement opportunities with the district to collaborate together between the district and our families and parents. Thank you.
Made up the whole forum and only missed turning on my mic once. It's extremely important to have family engagement in our school district, not just as taxpayers and stakeholders, but as a key factor in the success of our students academically. When families are engaged in the learning process, they can communicate with teachers and building leaders, they can engage with their child on the concepts they're learning in school, and we can truly build an education system that facilitates effective learning at school and at home. The district has engaged with families through task forces, like some that I've served on. But we know that there are barriers for families to participate in those traditional settings. On top of my commitment to work with families in my role as a board member, I propose that the district explore how we can invest in family engagement at a system level. Many large districts around the country have recognized the importance of family engagement in student success and invested in building out their capacity to reach all members of the community and by having trusted community liaisons in their, in their community. And those liaisons who work part-time on the district's behalf to engage with families would be a worthy investment and one that I'll encourage the district to explore.
Jessica Jones.
My primary motivation to run for school board was feeling like parental input was not being included as well as it could be. I have attended many school board meetings, I have sent many emails, I have very frequent conversations with my children's teachers and school principal to inform myself as to how their education is going. I find that there are many, many barriers for all families to be included, but especially families that are facing socioeconomic barriers, particularly for working parents. Parents, like I mentioned, who have to provide childcare, parents who have difficulty with transportation, making it in-person to school board meetings, as well as the idea that when there is a controversial subject, time is limited to 10 people providing three minutes of testimony each. And my guess is that there may be many more than 10 people who would like to provide input if there were other options to do so. I would strongly support having free childcare available at school board meetings. I support that school board meetings would be livestreamed, and that testimony could be provided through electronic means.
Jim Jonas.
Yeah, engaged parents strengthen our schools. Parental involvement is key to student success. So, I know firsthand, working with parents during my career at West Fargo High School, we all want what's best for the individual student and child. So, working together and collaborating, we as a district can do better between the feedback loop between parents. I know Mark mentioned our focus groups. We could have more of those listening sessions and improve our feedback loop. But, so parental involvement is crucial. Thank you.
John Erickson.
Yeah, parents are certainly the key as we're working through it and, you know, supporting the students to be able to go through it. But it's kind of building that relationship with individual buildings, whether it be the teachers, the principals. And I know, you know, at different board meetings, we've certainly asked, it's like, you know, how can we be, reach out or be more connected and be more engaged? And, you know, it's certainly trying to find that right time or that right mix to be able to reach out to each individual parent or, but encouraging the parents to become involved with the individual schools is really where we want to focus. But it's always good to be engaged. We ask the question many times. We try to reach out a number of different ways, and we're always looking for ideas. So, certain, if anybody's got any ideas, as a board, we'd be happy to accept them.
Cole Davidson.
I believe it's vital for parents to not only be heard, but to be fully engaged in their students' education. And I think the onus in forging that relationship, that engagement, that partnership, needs to be on both parents and on the school system. So, parents need to take the initiative to pursue that engagement in their children's education. But the school system also needs to make that engagement accessible. So, I like some of the ideas that I've heard regarding live streaming school board meetings. You know, maybe we can use social media more effectively in communicating maybe controversial policies to parents to help them engage, so it is accessible with their schedules, with the demands that are on their time. But 100%, as I said earlier, parents should be and should want to be the primary stakeholders in their children's education, and we need to explore as many ways as possible to get them involved and make sure their voices are heard.
Thank you. That concludes our question time. You've got through 14 questions. Congratulations. We're going to run a little long to get your closing statements, and I got to get a little thank yous here. Thanks to all of the people who attended tonight, especially to the League of Women Voters volunteers who are here and helped make this successful again. Thank you to the city of West Fargo for the space and the technology so that this can play on local cable access and eventually online as well. And please, again, contact these candidates through whatever mechanisms they have for talking to candidates, including talking to them tonight after this is over. Check out our vote411.org website to see some more questions they've answered. And thank you to Folkways for helping sponsor that website for us. And so we will begin the closing statements. One minute just for Mark Staples.
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters, the audience members here in the room and watching at home, and members of the media who attended tonight's forum to help educate voters on the issues at stake in this election. When families choose to live in our community, they do so with the expectation that their child will receive a great education. It's the school board's responsibility to oversee our district's operation and direct investments into our classrooms to make sure we... operation and direct investments into our classrooms to make sure we deliver on that expectation. A lot has changed since my grandma graduated from West Fargo High School seventy-three years ago, uh, but one thing has remained constant. When every child receives an excellent education, our community thrives. My name is Mark Staples and I'm running for West Fargo School Board because I believe every student deserves a public education that sets them up for success. I bring a background in public engagement and policymaking that will help our school board become even better at creating a district where every single student can succeed. If there's anything you want to talk with me about, please reach out to me through my website, markforwf.com. With your vote, I hope to continue working for the students, families, educators, and taxpayers in our district. Thank you.
Jessica Jones.
Thank you again to the league for organizing and to all attending for engaging in this important event. I'm grateful for the creative ideas shared by candidates tonight. Engaging in civil discourse and sharing unique perspectives that help us all grow is the background of our country. As a parent, I am striving for the West Fargo District to continue to be one of excellence and choice by ensuring that all students learn these same skills. To take in information, identify if it is rational, and to guide important decisions. For our teachers to be able to help students learn these skills, I believe teachers need freedom and strong support and engagement from parents. Our students also need all stakeholders to recognize that not every student starts with an equal playing field. And to ensure that one's address, gender orientation, or place of birth will not significantly impact their ability to achieve excellence or their safety while in school. As a psychologist, I'm gravely concerned about the mental health of our students and staff, and I know that many face significant barriers that limit their ability to learn or teach. If elected, I will take action to help all students and staff do better. Thank you.
Jim Jonas.
All right, thank you. Once again, thank you to the League of Women Voters and everybody that attended tonight. And between our incredible educators, support staff, and our resilient students, we have so many reasons to be hopeful. Our amazing teachers have done a wonderful job the last two years, uh, under unprecedented circumstances. So, I want to congratulate them and, and, and I'm an advocate for our teachers, our students, our support staff. And, uh, I'm very dedicated to the community and, uh, I appreciate everybody coming tonight. And thank you for your support.
John Erickson.
Karen, I'd like to thank everybody that came out and certain, to the, uh, thank the Women of League Voters. And, uh, really the focus is, you know, educating learners for tomorrow's world. We're here for the kids and our focus is the kids as we kind of go through it. How can we help create that graduate, um, profile to be able, so they can go on and, and choose where they want to go on their next stage of life. But, you know, as we're doing that, we want to certainly empower the teachers, um, embrace the new challenges, create the communities in each one of the schools to support each other and support the families that are there. And then, um, you know, I've had the benefit of being in the district for twelve years, uh, cause I have a graduate this year, which is very exciting, and be able to go through it. And then I have a freshman still coming up through, um, Cheyenne also. But, um, highlight is, is coming up with the graduation and being able to see all the seniors walk across the stage and shake their hands as many as we can. And, uh, that is really just, if you want to be inspired, certainly that's the way to be able to, um, share back and give back. And, uh, so, uh, my name is John Erickson. I'm looking for reelection so I can keep consistency and wellness into the district.
Cole Davidson.
Again, thank you for hosting this event tonight. I mentioned my kids earlier, but Corinne, I love you too. I had to get that in there. Um, so first and foremost, I'm running because I'm, I'm a father of three children in this school district. Um, I'm a concerned father who, uh, doesn't like some of what I'm seeing across the nation and here locally. Um, I, I'm not afraid to ask tough questions, to broach difficult topics, and to engage in respectful dialogue to find solutions to those problems. Um, I believe that the school environment should focus on, uh, foundations of reading, writing, math, physical sciences, and the arts, in an environment that's free from controversial, uh, political or, or social, uh, controversy, uh, being pushed on the students or promoted in the classroom. Um, I, uh, am a strong believer that parents, uh, like I said, should be the primary stakeholders in their children's education. We should always, every decision that we make should put students first. Um, and we need to come together as a community to achieve that goal.
Jessica Jackson.
Yeah, thank you. So, over the last four years, um, as a board member, and the last year in particular, um, serving as vice president, I have learned, uh, so many things. I've served with passion, dedication, been curious, asked questions, challenged when necessary. Um, and most importantly, I've learned that you truly can accomplish amazing things and move mountains when you bring together a truly committed, passionate group of people that put kids first. And that is what we do and will continue to do. Uh, I have a strong commitment to public education, as I've mentioned before, before. Every child of, I truly believe every child deserves an opportunity to be their best self and to grow into their best self. We do need to remain fiscally responsible as a district as we continue to grow and ensure that our, uh, our buildings and our facilities too as well, uh, remain equitable. Um, and I fully, uh, and I would appreciate your support in the next election. Thank you. And I will stop.
Thank you. Thank you to all of the candidates and to everyone who also participated tonight. And, um, everybody remember you've got exactly four weeks before Election Day if you're watching this live. Um, and hope everybody turns out on June fourteenth to back one of these fine candidates. And please let us all finish this by giving them a round of applause for participating in our democracy. Good night, everybody.